Aloha, everybody. Welcome to the joint hearings between the Committee on Economic Development, Energy and Tourism, sorry, T3RME, and Government Operations, Tuesday, March 19, 2024. We convene in Conference Room 225. Meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event, we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. Committees will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:05 PM Tuesday, March 21, 2024, and this conference room, 225, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. In order to facilitate the hearing in timely manner, a two-minute testimony time limit is requested. One item, 1829, this is related to electric vehicles. First up, we have State Energy Office. Okay, next up is Keith Regan.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Chairs, Vice Chair, Keith Regan, State Comptroller for the Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up, we have Steve Wine-Electrics, your program manager.
Hello, Triria MacComber with Hawaiian Electric. We stand in support of this measure. Want to just reinforce that increased workplace charging is a strategic initiative that creates equitable and accessible EV charging options for employees, and it shifts energy demand for charging from the evenings to during the day when we have more renewable energy on the grid. So we stand in support here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ulo Pono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair McKelvey, Chair DeCoit, Vice Chair Gabbard. Michael Monicati here on behalf of Ulo Pono Initiative. Thank you so much, Chair, for hearing this important measure. We are in strong support of this bill. We think that this is future-proofing for our state buildings and really meeting where our communities are going, especially with our electric vehicle adoption across our state. So really do appreciate you hearing this measure, keeping it moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next up, Blue Planet Foundation. Okay, thank you so much. Next up is Alliance for Automotive Innovation via Zoom.
They're not available on Zoom chair.
Okay. Finally, we have written from Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission. They are in support. We have Oahu MPO OMA written in support. Cheryl Polak, 350 Hawaii. Written in support, Ted Boland. Written in support, Neil Moran for Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association. Written in support, and then Kauai Climate Action Coalition. Written in support. We also have numerous individuals who testified with written testimony. All of them are in support. That's all we have on the measures before us. Go ahead, go on up and identify yourself.
Chair's Vice Chair Nicole Chernohorsky from the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, anybody else who I might have missed testifying? You guys got your lineup? Members, any questions? Yes, please go.
Hey, Keith.
Sorry, Chair.
Sorry. Will it read what you read? No. How much more will it cost to include EV charger-ready parking stalls in state construction?
Are we talking about new facilities or retrofitting?
I guess for new.
Right. So for new facilities, I mean, it really just, yeah, I think we've heard estimates of anywhere between maybe $5,000 or $6,000 per stall, something in that range. But obviously, newer facilities are a lot cheaper, just because we're not having to trench and do all kinds of other stuff to existing facilities. Any other questions?
Will the users of the EV charging stations pay for its use, or will the revenues cover the electricity maintenance?
So typically, thanks for the question. So typically, what we would do is charge an hourly or, you know, like a per kilowatt hour fee or based on time that would cover the cost of providing the energy to, you know, charge the vehicle. And then there may be some additional fees that would cover sort of just general maintenance, you know, for the equipment as well.
So get this question. So sometimes I see one car that is not an EV parked there.
Yes. Get a ticket.
Well, you know, just charge them one fee too.
We do. Parking fee. And they should be parking in a regular.
Yeah, but you don't get the money for the ticket.
We don't. No, we don't.
We should charge them one fee too.
Well, we prefer that they don't park in an EV parking stall.
Well, I guess because they pay taxes and they figure why not. Just like the gas guzzling guy that one was on the committee that never go buy an EV.
The guys who take the grocery bag after.
Well, we would encourage people that don't have an EV to not park.
So how much is the fee? Because I don't park, you know, because I don't own an EV. But how much is the?
Per kilowatt hour or whatever the?
Oh, you guys go by hour. You can buy hours. Two hours. $2 an hour.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah, he said one solar. Thank you.
You're welcome, Chair.
Oh, we go. Um, why do you think DOT needs to be involved in this measure? I don't see what connection they have insofar as EV chargers in state facilities.
Um, I mean, not the author of the bill, so I'm not 100% sure why they would be involved in it. But, you know, I think that having more resources involved may be good in terms of being able to get different contexts or perspectives, right, as we go forward. But I don't have.
Zero connection at all.
My apologies, but again, it's.
No, 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 I just want to be honest. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, want to recess for decision making or just? Oh, we don't. Okay, we'll recess to get forum for decision making. Welcome back, everybody. The joint hearing between Committees on GBO and EET on the one item agenda, HB 1829. It appears our Coach Chair needs quorum. So what we're going to do is we're going to make a recommendation and vote on Government Operations now, and then we'll let them. They're going to defer, they may defer time certain DM till Thursday. We'll see after our vote. Okay, so recommendation is we're going to pass this out as the Senate Draft One. We're going to remove the Department of Transportation out of the bill because we failed to see how their connection is going to be integral to this, and a new defective date of 2491. That's right, it's a new number. I'll let you all look it up to see what that means. Okay, any more questions or comments on GBO's side?
Yes.
Yes, go.
So is it a blank appropriation or you guys going to put in the 250,000?
We're going to leave that to land.
So blank appropriation. Okay.
Because they're not going to have it sorted out for their end, so.
Okay.
Okay. We can go ahead and note in the committee report to suggest them out. Any other questions or comments on the measure? If not, Vice Chair, 1829, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Chair votes yes. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Sam Bwin Vettura?
Aye.
Senator Rukai?
Yes.
Senator Awah?
No.
There's your passes.
Hey, thank you, guys. We'll just take a quick two-minute recess. Welcome right back to the joint hearing. I defer to my chair.
So EET, same request. Chair goes aye. Vice Chair, a vote.
I'm sorry, just to recollect, it's passed with amendments.
Yes, oh, yeah, sorry. HB 1829, passing with amendments.
Vice Chair votes yes. Senator Fukunaga, excuse. Senator Kim, excuse. Senator Favela.
Yes.
Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the joint hearing. Welcome back, everybody. We're on the three 10 agenda, Tuesday, March 19, 225, a joint hearing with ourselves and Committee on Water and Land, two bills on the agenda. First, just for everybody's identification, we're convening in room CR 225, streaming live on YouTube. In the likely event we have any difficulties in the hearing, has to be suspended due to technical difficulties. Committee will reconvene, discuss any outstanding business at 3:06 PM Tuesday, March 21. In this conference room, and a public notice will be posted, and we ask for people to stick to our customary two-minute time limit. First up is House Bill 2090, House Draft One relating to housing. First up, we have DLR written in support. We have HHFDC.
Captain Chairs, Vice Chairs, we members, we stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Yeah, thank you so much. Realtors.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs. My name is Lindsay Garcia from Realtors. We do stand in support of this bill. We do see that NIOF is asking for the implementation date to be moved up to January 1, 2025, and we are in support of that amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Range Tanaka, Neo. Written, oh, there it is.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the Committee, Evan Oi, on behalf of NIOF Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this measure. You know, we feel as though adaptive reuse is a vital tool to allowing affordable housing and housing units in general to be brought online at a faster pace. We do propose an amendment in there. I believe it amends Chapter 46A and B, and it just bumps up the date a year from January 1, 2026 to January 1, 2025, so that it could assist with existing projects as soon as possible. So that would be our only recommendation in that regard, and that would be to further intend to the bill to get housing units online as fast as possible. So, you know, thank you for the time, and we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have BIA, Max Lindsay. Okay, we have, let's see, by Sterling Higa, Housing for Hawaii's Future.
They're not present on Zoom chair.
Okay, written in support then. Hawaii ApoC.
They're also not on Zoom.
Is anybody on Zoom?
There is. We have one testifier on Zoom.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and cut to them then? Okay, Reed, you're on. AIA.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair Reed Mizui. On behalf of the American Institute of Architects, Hawaii State Council, we stand on our written testimony with comments. Our main comments is the language kind of mistakes building code with the zoning code, and that's a key thing that we would like to see rectified. We do see this as a county concern, and we like to note that counties are typically the ones who administer zoning code. Thank you for having us. I'll be available for questions.
Appreciate you being here, sir. Okay, next up, we have, let's see, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, written in support. Chamber, Hawaii Island Chamber of Commerce, written in support. We have BOMA, Boma, written in support, and we have several individuals, all have submitted written testimony in support of the measure. That's all I have is the testifiers. Anybody in the audience or Zoom who I might have missed wants to testify on this? Seeing none, members, questions? Let's see. We have a question. I guess we parked up the wrong tree with this one, but. Yes, just the testimony from AIA that, you know, we're using building codes instead of zoning codes. I mean, care to respond to that observation?
So from my understanding, this bill, one of the elements of the bill is to require the counties to follow the standards of the IBC in regards to adaptive reuse when it comes to commercial buildings. And I think so that, you know, there needs to be some sort of code, and the international building code is a vetted code throughout the nation and throughout many countries as well. And so, you know, this is, we feel as though this is a building code issue because in order for adaptive reuse to comply, there needs to be changes to be consistent with the IBC and allow for the conversion of commercial to residential in certain parts of, you know, downtown Honolulu, for example. So that's why I think this is necessary at this point.
But there is no confusion between building code and zoning code, is the point?
Not from my point of view.
So this is the right language. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, okay, we'll go ahead and recess. I'll just join hearing. We'll vote on our single area recess. To the Government Operations Agenda, 3:00 PM, Room 225. Meetings being streamed live on YouTube, and in the likely event, we have difficulties and abruptly end this hearing. Then we reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:07 PM on Tuesday, March 21, in this conference room, and a public notice will be posted on the website, and we also ask everybody to stick to the two-minute timing rule that we have right now. Okay, that being said, we'll move on to the next, the first bill on our agenda, which will be House Bill, I'm sorry, my eyes are really bad, 1597. And first up, we have OIP.
Good afternoon, Chair, Committee Member Sheroka Kaza, Park Director of OIP, and we stand in strong support of this bill. This bill would clarify the statute by making the Sunshine Law provisions consistent with the OIP process to appeal OIP decisions. Because there is not this clarity in the current law, this Hawaii Supreme Court allowed a complaining party to sue OIP instead of the board that did the alleged violation, which is like suing the court instead of the party that was found guilty, and that case actually was not even found guilty. So that's the long and the short of it, and we just hope that you will pass this bill with a good effective date instead of 3,000, maybe something closer to that time, 2024.
2491.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Ben Krebs.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. You have our written testimony in support. We strongly support this measure. We appreciate Chair for setting this bill for hearing. This primarily addresses a 2020 Hawaii Supreme Court decision, as mentioned by OIP, that created a disincentive to take Sunshine Law matters issues to OIP, and it also authorized complainants to sue OIP instead of a board. So this bill removes that disincentive and also clarifies that an action is against the board and not OIP, and it also does a few other things to align it with the UIPA as the outline in our testimony, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Sterling Marita, site professional journalist, written in support, and we have an individual, Lynn Matsuo, written in support. That's all we have on the measure. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is House. These are all frequent flyers of GBO. Exactly. Okay, next up, we have 2089, Energy Office.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office, will stand on our written testimony with deep concerns, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I think they might have been addressed, but, okay, Tim Lyons is subcontractors. Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, Josh Wish, Holomua. Okay, we have Range Tanaka, Naopi again. Okay, we have Jody Robinson, Blue Planet.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jody Robinson of Blue Planet. Wanted to note that we previously opposed this measure and changed it to comments due to the removal of the energy codes from the delayed code adoption process. However, noting in testimony, there is still a lot of adoption, opposition and concerns regarding resilience, fire safety, public health and safety with the delay and proposed delay of this bill. Just wanted to note that one of the fundamental changes that Blue Planet and others see as critical to improving the codes' adoption process is the funding and filling of two positions and DAGs to fund staff to provide direction to the Codes Council so that we can more efficiently ensure that our codes are adopted on a timely, timely matter, which is what I think the heart of this bill is trying to address: affordable housing, issues of climate change and resilience, fire safety. It's going to be ongoing issues, and we really need staff to be able to push this issue forward and make sure that we're not just delaying and kicking the can down the road when it comes to public health and safety and ensuring our codes are updated timely matters. So with that, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Greg Thielen, BIA. Okay, Zoom?
Yes, they're present on Zoom.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Greg Thielen. I'm the volunteer Chair of the BIA Codes Committee. You have our written testimony in support of this measure. Just wanted to add a few points. I think there's an outdated concept of what a building code is, like a quaint image of a building inspector walking around a job site with a book that he can look at. So I thought I would bring our building codes. I got to back pretty far up to get them all in the camera here. So when we say building code, this is what we're talking about. The other thing that I wanted to add that isn't really addressed fully in our testimony is, yes, codes add to the cost of housing. That's been proven indisputably. You have the testimony from the National Association of Home Builders with the economic studies to back that up. But in addition, there's a cost to government, especially the building departments at the county levels that are tasked with overseeing the building code, have to be adjusting to and reviewing codes every three years currently. And frankly, they're looking at state codes as well as county codes and national codes, so they're trying to learn three codes at once. This puts a heavy burden in terms of training on people, on agencies that are already short-staffed. This is problematic throughout the year, anytime, but especially with the Maui recovery efforts after the wildfires. The last thing we really need to have building officials do is engage in code training as opposed to actually reviewing plans and issuing permits. On a final note, I just want to emphasize a point in our testimony. The rate of cycles being at every three years is not mandated by government at any level. This is something that people that write and sell the code books choose for themselves, and they are currently, in terms of the ICC, making nearly $100 million a year by selling code books to all of us. That seems like a severe conflict of interest to me. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. I just was saying the same thing. Let's see, next up, we have Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club.
Good afternoon, Chair McKelvey, Vice Chair Gabbard, Members of the Committee, Wayne Tanaka with the Sierra Club of Hawaii. You have our testimony in opposition to this bill, highlighting, you know, the extra risks that it would pose to, you know, both residents as well as first responders. I do want to add a few additional points, if I may. You know, first, I think we've all, you know, read and heard about the extreme staffing and retention issues that our permitting departments have been dealing with. And, I mean, if you have staff turning over every year and a half, every two years, skipping code cycles is not going to do anything to expedite permit reviews. I mean, you're still going to have to train people and retrain people, you know, continually, much more frequently than the code cycles. And that's really the real issue here. And, you know, we really need to recognize what the true challenges we're facing are, you know, as well as the human health and safety and economic impacts of foregoing code updates. You know, on a related note, you know, in addition to the impacts this may have on our ability to get federal funding, such as through FEMA, FEMA has also done a study that has shown that cities with updated codes will save about, in their estimation, about $32 billion over the next 20 years. So, you know, a measure like this could result in significant, you know, financial opportunity costs, as well as eliminating our ability to access federal funds. And then finally, you know, I think we're all, you know, recognize that we're facing kind of a crisis in insurance coverage currently, right? And insurance companies, you know, they aren't going to look favorably at jurisdictions that forego standards and updates to reduce damage and ultimately insurance payouts. So this is another consideration that the committee may want to consider, especially since it may impact local residents' ability to get affordable insurance, and then by extension, a mortgage and affordable housing. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we just respectfully ask that you hold this measure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Craig Stevenson, International Code Council.
Yes, Craig Stevenson, representing the International Code Council. Thank you, Chair McKelvey, and Vice Chair Gabbard, and the Members of the Government Operations. You might be wondering why the ICC is engaged in this piece of legislation and imposing it. I want to tell you a little bit about our history of the organization. Our organization's history goes back over 100 years. We were formed by state and local agencies and government, and we support our members with the model building codes that have been in use in Hawaii for over 50 years preceding the Building Code Act. I was involved with Act 82 in 2007. We had a blue ribbon panel under the Linda Lingal administration, and all the stakeholders got together. So a lot of these pieces that you're hearing through testimony came together, were vetted. It was decided that to have two years to be able to put together the state code, review it, to know what you're going through, knowing how to amend it, make it benefit Hawaii. And Hawaii has been a contributor to many of our codes, in particular, the energy code, they Hawaiianized it, tropicalized it, made it so that it was less costly for Hawaii and actually other island nations, as well as the other territories. So Hawaii has contributed a lot to this. But more importantly, our organization also has been involved in FEMA mitigation assessment teams. I was there with the Fire Research Institute. Having said that, that's our involvement. One of the things that I'd like to point out is the cost share and the equitable proportionality of any of the FEMA's monies through the BRIC program, the DAR, the Stafford, needs to be fully understand, because that risk is millions or hundreds of millions of dollars that could be obligated to the state rather than the fair equitable cost share brought on by the federal government helping to do mitigation and rebuilding. So what I want to point out is that the new codes give you more resilience, innovation, design flexibility, and actually have lowered the costs. If you would have stayed on the older codes, they would have cost you a lot more. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give the testimony, and I look forward to working with you and helping solve the issues that happen to be at hand that this bill really doesn't address. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll switch now to Reed from AIA. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair. Thanks. You have our written testimony, and we stand by our written testimony in strong opposition to the bill. We echo the others, like Blue Planet and Sierra Club, as well as ICC, that, you know, the crux of the matter is that building code does evolve. It evolves because of situations related to natural disasters, man-made disasters, tragedies that occur with the built environment, with the buildings that we occupy. And if you decide to skip a code cycle, meaning that you're going to go from three years to six years and skip a whole code cycle, there could be something in that code cycle that you skipped that could be detrimental or even helpful to you in when you design buildings and build buildings. If you do that, there could be very extreme problems and negative effects, much of which is in our testimony. The major thing is with what happened in Lahaina. On the edge of planning to rebuild for Lahaina, and we're going to entertain such a bill as this is ludicrous, in our opinions, that you would even consider doing this just for the ease of governmental agencies getting used to building code. There's no cost on a life. There's no cost that you can determine to help out with building resiliency in the wake of a disaster. The last thing I want to share is that we have a lot of examples of the reasons why building permitting is taking so long. And if you read through our testimony, the recent years have proved to be difficult for various reasons, and this bill should not be villainizing that building code process and permitting. We feel it doesn't affect it at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have Eola Kakou, written in opposition. Sherry Polak, 350 Hawaii, written in opposition. Kevin Hirayama for sheet metal and air conditioning. 350 Hawaii, written in opposition, Kevin Hirayama for sheet metal and air conditioning. They're opposed, Kupono for Waupuna in opposition. We have Grassroots Institute, they are in support. We have, let's see, National Association of Home Builders in support. We have Ed Schultz, Hawaii Host Group, they're in support. Hawaii Community Foundation in support, written testifying for Mana Up, Molly James, written in support, Tattle Guarantee, written in support, Hawaii Energy. They have comments. And HPM Building Supply with late testimony in support, and two more individuals with late testimony, both in support. Let's see. Oh, Ian Robertson.
Afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Ian Robertson. I'm the author, two distinguished professor of structural engineering at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, where I've taught courses in structural engineering for the past 32 years. I'm also a licensed engineer, structural engineer, in the state of Hawaii and past president of the Structural Engineers Association of Hawaii. The current president of the Structural Engineers Association informed me this morning that they had taken a poll of the Structural Engineers Association membership, which had voted two to one opposing this bill. That testimony will be submitted at future hearings. I'm currently also serve as a subject matter expert for FEMA, the Building Science Branch in headquarters, in their efforts to advance the 2022 Biden Administration Program entitled National Initiative to Advance Building Codes. This program emphasizes and incentivizes statewide adoption of the most current building codes in a timely manner. This House Bill 2089 would mean that Hawaii no longer meets that objective. Hawaii is currently in line to receive over $11 million this fiscal year in FEMA mitigation funds, of which $1.12 million is earmarked for, and I quote, "statewide building code technical assistance program." It's specifically earmarked for assisting the state adopt the latest codes and training building department staff, architects, engineers, and contractors on the improvements of the latest additions of the code. Passing House Bill 2089 will virtually ensure that we will never get this level of support from FEMA in the future. For this and all of the 12 compelling reasons given in my written testimony, I strongly encourage you to reject this bill. Thanks for allowing me to testify, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you so much. We received numerous written testimony from individuals, all who were indicated they are in opposition to it. That's all we received on the measure. Anybody else in the audience that's testified?
Yes, my name is Derek Chalk. I did submit testimony through the online system. Not sure why it didn't register. Okay, thank you. Senators, I was a member of the original task force that developed the state building code statute in 2005, and in 2007, I was one of the first members of the State Building Council as a representative of the Structural Engineers Association. And I'm speaking in opposition of this bill. My first point in my written testimony, which I don't know if you thought it is, that you're probably aware that the governor has an emergency proclamation related to housing. In that proclamation, he suspended the operations of the State Building Code Council, and you have not met since that time. So there's already been essentially a damper put on the adoption of building codes by the governor's proclamation, and the duration of that is indefinite. The problem with this is that if you also pass 2089, that calls for adopting every other code, whenever that proclamation ceases to involve the State Building Code Council, it's going to create confusion about which code adoption, which edition do we go to? Because State Building Code Council asked about the 2018 code, and if it goes on much further with the proclamation, they might be faced with adopting a code that's already obsolete because it's the next one in line in every other, which would be the 2024. So that's an issue. The other issue is that when you skip other code and you're working the deadlines, you wind up having a code that's 10 years old before you adopt another one, and that's really obsolete. And it causes the other issues that, say, AIA mentioned. The last thing is that in 2017, the state legislature already addressed this issue in that it rescinded a prior statute that allowed the six-year versioning and went back to the three-year. So it's kind of been there, done that, and settled on the three-year cycle.
Okay. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Anybody else in the audience wishing to weigh in on this measure? Seeing that, members, are there any questions? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the last bill on Agenda 2069. Perseptaggs. And you like it?
Chair, Vice Chair, members, Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. I would just note that we did have an opportunity to work closely with the public unions, and so the language of this bill was modified as part of that collaborative effort. So thank you very much.
They didn't testify against it, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Anybody else on this one? If not, we will just do a brief recess for decision-making on this. Okay, recess, I keep. Got to improvise. Okay, coming back for our decision-making on the 3 o'clock GVO agenda. On HB 1597, the chair's recommendation will be to pass SD1 with a clean date upon approval. Any discussion? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye?
I'm not.
Oh.
I'm Senator, I'm just a member.
Oh, okay. Let's see here. GVO 3 p.m.
You want me to take the vote?
Would you mind?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
1597.
Voting on SB, HB 1597, Chair McKelvey is excused, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator San Juan Ben Truva votes aye, and, excuse me. Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Owa. Vice Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then on HB 2089, HT2, the chair's recommendation will be to defer decision-making on this one until Thursday, March 21st, at 3 p.m. here in room 225. And then on the final measure, HB 2069, the chair's recommendation will be to pass SD1 with a clean date of July 1st, 2024. Any discussion? Vice Chair votes aye?
Voting on HB 2069 passed with amendments on a clean day. All members being present except for Chair. Any reservations, any naysaying, none? Vice Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you very much. That concludes the 3 p.m. GVO.
We're convening the 310 agenda. This is Tuesday, March 19th, in Conference Room 225. This is a Joint Committee on Government Operations in Waterland. We started the agenda. We're now moving on to House Bill 1542, HT2, relating to land use between July 1st, 2024, and December 31st, 2026, authorizes each county planning permission to petition for the redistricting of lands from agricultural districts to rural districts to the land use commissions, declaratory ruling process. First up on the agenda from Land Use Commission, anyone? Yep, Director. Followed by Director is Mary Alice Evans from OPSD.
Hello, Chairs. Thank you for the opportunity. We stand on our written testimonium of comments and are here for intermining questions.
Okay, thank you. From OPSD, Mary Alice Evans. I see Katia Velaziano. After her, we also have the Department of Ag.
Hello, Katia Velaziano, OPSD. Thank you for hearing this measure. We see this as an opportunity to get property owners out of regulatory limbo. We support this with comments. We've provided some recommendations in regards to how to eliminate some of the duplication in this bill. We've taken a look at the testimony submitted by the Land Use Commission, and we think that we can work with their recommended changes. However, with their proposed new Section 2A, we don't want to impose ourselves upon the county. We don't have any opportunity to change how the county processes work. So we would recommend that the language reads as follows. The State Office of Planning and Sustainable Development shall, in every case, appear as a party at the state level and make recommendations to address state interests and public trust issues. So we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Velaziano. Next up is Department of Agriculture. Anyone here to testify on that? Offering comments, Gerald Silva in opposition, Jackie Keefe in opposition, Amy Stevens in opposition. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom that wishes to testify on HB 1542? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Yep, Chair.
Just wanted you to respond or weigh in on OPSD's amendment to your amendment, I guess.
Thank you, Chair. Our concern is that the primary hearing on this matter will be done at the county level because the way it's set up is that it's a declaratory ruling process at the state level, which is more of a review of what occurred at the county level rather than at the national level hearing. In those circumstances, I think it's important that the issues of the public trust doctrine and state interests be addressed at the evidentiary hearing rather than at the Land Use Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? I have a question for OPSD. Thank you, Director. Two questions. The further comments that you provided, are those additional amendments to what was submitted to the committees that you mentioned, that last paragraph that you read, the proposed amendment language?
That is revising the amendments that the LUC offered up.
Okay. And then lastly, I noticed also in your testimony, you mentioned areas such as maybe the Puna District on Hawaii Island. But what other counties would benefit from this if they were to request something like that within this proposed language?
There are probably other, besides Big Island, there are probably a few other places, maybe on Kauai that would benefit, probably not too many on Oahu. It's fairly limited in size. These are definitely homes that already exist, and they're in a, you know, it's difficult for them to get permits at this point in time, and they're not doing any real agriculture there. So it's a very small window in which these changes can happen. OPSD had studied this issue a number of years ago and had also concluded that changes needed to be made that brought certain, a very small number of agricultural lands into the rural districts to better reflect what's simply going on there. So we're in support of this. It's a narrow window. It's a very small number of properties that will be ultimately impacted. So.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, members? If not, Chair, should we DM till the end of your calendar?
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and do these agendas at the end of our DM.
Okay, yeah, this concludes our 310 agenda. We're going to go back into recess and the calendar, as Chairman McKelvey mentioned. We're in recess.
Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome back. We appreciate your patience on this wild joint deadline day. We're going to do one of our deferred decision-making agenda in the joint hearing that we had with our friends from AEN and Health and Human Services. I'm going to let my Vice Chair read out the recommendations that will be made for this vote. Vice Chair?
Okay, Chair, HB 2743, which has passed through AEN and HHS. The amendments that we agreed upon were deleting the language that would have defined alternative plan, county advisory board, and wastewater treatment plan. And these are all the ones that were deleted, we deleted the language from. Secondly, required each county to develop and maintain a wastewater management plan. Third, required the county to set the amount of assessable pollution fee at a certain rate. Fourth, appropriated funds to each county. And fifth, appropriated funds for the establishment of positions within the Department of Health. Then, addition to that, we added language that, three points. Number one, requiring UHC grant college program and UH Water Resources Research Center to identify specific priority areas in which county sewer system or other centralized treatment system will be expanded or constructed to reduce or eliminate cesspools before January 1st, 2050. Secondly, authorizes the counties to use other revenues, including real property tax revenues, for certain activities that eliminate, reduce, or mitigate the impacts of cesspools. And third, appropriates an unspecified amount of funds to UH. And then finally, we amended the language. Five points here. Number one, to codify the language of certain definitions in Chapter 11-62 HTR, rather refer to it citations. Secondly, to authorize, rather than require, counties to designate sewer improvement districts. Third, provisions regarding the reporting duties of each county that assesses a cesspool pollution fee. And fourth, in Section 1, to reflect its minimum purpose. And finally, it defines sewer system to reflect the definition of sewerage system, quote unquote, as defined in HRS 342D-1.
Okay. Way to clean up a stinky bill. Members, any questions or comments on the changes that we're going to adopt for again? If not, Vice Chair recommendation is HB 2070, HD1, SD1. I vote yes.
It's in 2070.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, I'm supposed to agree to this. I don't have one.
No, we're voting on, we're just doing two of our. Yes. Ready, guys? Oh, I vote yes.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator San Juan Ben Truva. Aye. Senator Wakai? Yes. Senator Owa?
No. Okay, thank you very much. This concludes the DM, deferred DM of the joint, and. Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome back. This is the GVO Deferred Decision Making Agenda at 3 p.m., room 225. We will start off with the first bill, which was House Bill 2070 relating to procurement. Everybody supports the measure, so we're going to go ahead and put a clean effective date of July 1st, 2024, and move it on with an SD1. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2070, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Your recommendations to pass with amendments, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator San Juan Ben Truva.
Aye. Senator Wakai? Yes. And Senator Owa?
Thank you very much. 2496, HD1, recommendation is a Senator app. We're going to adopt the amendments from SBO that was agreed to by state DRT during the testimony. We're going to also have to make tech non-substantive amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and a defective date of 2491. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2496, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Okay, we made the passage of amendments. If members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Your members, your passes.
Thank you. House Bill 2238, House Draft 1. Members, recommendation is Section 3, which was discussed about, has already gone up to the governor in a table form in another bill. So we're just going to go ahead and remove that section and add a defective date of 2491 so that it can be part of the conversation. Questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2230, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Okay, the passive amendments are the ability to vote reservations. Hearing none, measure passes.
Okay. Next up is House Bill 1946, HD2, Process Improvement. Recommendation is a Senate Draft One. We're going to work, move the pilot to DOH for hiring process improvement, which they support and are very eager about. We're going to do recruitment, both internal, external, with classifications and postings, conduct interviews and rank order candidates to be sent to their HR section for further review job offer. DOH will submit a report to the ledge no later than 20 days prior to the ledge session of 2027 to include efficacy and recommendations of the pilot. We're going to make technical non-substantive amendments to the measure for clarity, consistency and style. And we're going to add a defective date of 2491 in the measure for further conversations. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1946.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So on the second page, there is a blank appropriation. How much are you going to give DOH?
We're going to let ways and means decide that out. Okay, at this point, we don't know. So we want to leave it for there so ways and means can elaborate further.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, any more questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1946, HD2, SD1, I vote yes.
If members present, are there any no votes or reservations? So, no vote for Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to have is House Bill 2482, House Draft One, relating to meeting notices. What we're going to do, members, is we're going to go back to the House Bill version, which was also alluded to in the amendments made by Mr. Peter Fritz in the testimony. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2482, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
President, any no votes or reservations? Measure passes.
Thank you very much. 1598, House Draft One, relating to the Sunshine Law. Recommendation is a Senate Draft One. We're going to go ahead on page two, line two, add 92-7E that, this is the addition, includes a list of the documents that were compiled by the board and distributed to the board members before a meeting for use at that meeting and that. On page two, line five, we're going to add, the board shall post the board packet on its website. We're going to also add an effective date of 2491 for further conversation on these measures, on the amendments, which brings it more in line with the Senate version. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1598, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
If members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is House Bill 1600, House Draft One, relating to open meetings. Members, what we're going to do on this one is we're going to go ahead and we're going to make it six business days and we're going to put an effective date of 2491 so people can look at that and see if it should remain or if it should go back to the original version. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 1600, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
If members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
Okay, next up, 1599, House Draft One, Zoom bombing measure. A lot of discussion between the balancing tests. We wanted to continue. So with that, we're just going to defect date this one to 2491 as an SD one and move it on for further conversation. Members, questions, comments? If not, 1599, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Any no votes or reservations? Measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up, House Bill 2339, HD1, relating to 911 services. What we'd like to do on this one is keep this house vehicle going with technical non-substantive amendments for clarity, consistency and style. We want a new defective date of 2491. And we also are going to ask the committees of ways and means in the committee report to look at raising the ceiling of the funds so they can spend out more, which was one of the concerns raised with the Senate version. Members, questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2339, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
If members are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
Okay, next up, a favorite of our good Lieutenant Governor, certification documents, 2480. What recommendation is we also defect date this measure to 2491 to create a Senate Draft One and move it on to WHAMJDC so they can discuss it further. Members, questions, comments? If not, 2480, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Any no votes or reservations?
Okay, thank you very much. Next one, House Bill 2524, House Draft One, relating to condominiums. With your indulgence, members, we're going to make some amendments to further the conversation. On page one, we're going to make it 30 business days. We're going to attach the condo ombudsman to the real estate commission office and implement the duties of the bill there, as was discussed in the hearings. It's a novel idea. And then part two, we're going to add a part two to address the issues of 514A and 514B, which were brought up in testimony from the owners. So that can be looked at further in CPN and perhaps moved on in this vehicle or another vehicle. Technical non-substantive amendments for clarity, consistency and style and a defective date of 2491 to review the changes and discuss them further. Members, questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So are we creating a new ombudsman? It looks like if we're going to put it in the real estate commission.
Yes.
And if so, I don't see an appropriation language to pay for this ombudsman in the real estate commission.
Well, yeah, no, there is no.
So no appropriation. Okay, thank you.
It's a novel idea, but one that came up in the hearing because the ombudsman clearly had some concerns and challenges.
No, yeah, you can't do it.
Exactly, exactly. So with that, further with your indulgence, members, any more questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 2524, HD1, SD1, I vote yes.
Members, any no votes or reservations?
Reservations.
Measure passes.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe this concludes the DM. Well, hi, everybody. Welcome back to the joint hearing for Government Operations in Water and Land. We had two measures, two items on our agenda today. And the first one up was 2090. And what we're going to do is recommend it as an SD one and we're going to take Naopie's amendments that were offered. Members, an effective date of 2491. Members, questions, comments? If not, Government Operations, SD one, I vote yes.
Okay. President, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
With the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation to pass HB 2090, House Draft One, with amendments and any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair, Elafanti for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair recommendations to pass with amendments, HB 2090, HD1, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang, Senator McKelvey, Senator Favella is excused. Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed then with the vote decision making on HB 1542, House Draft Two, relating to land use. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments and in new section 2A, number seven, C, required due process for such district boundary amendments under constitutional and statutory law. And a new section, number, section two, A and number eight. The State Office of Planning and Sustainable Development shall, in every case, appear as a party at both the county and state level, make recommendations to address state interests and public trust issues. Any discussions on the amendments for the Committee on Water and Land? Then Chair's recommendation to pass HB 1542, House Draft Two, relating to land use with amendments. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass with amendments, HB 1542, HD2, noting the presence of Senator Favella with all members present, any no votes? Any votes with reservations? I vote reservations. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
At Government Operations, same recommendation, SD one, I vote yes.
If all members present, are there any no votes or reservations? No. No vote for Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. This concludes the joint hearing.